According to Metropolis City Council order, Monday, July the 13th, 2015. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Here.
Canada.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Mizell.
Here.
And Short.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing with prayer. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one. Be with this council, dear heavenly Father, that each decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community, be with the ones in our community that have lost loved ones, be with the sick, dear heavenly Father, and be with the caregivers, be with our armed service personnel not only on foreign ground but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home with their families. We ask in our precious name. Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of the 6:22 meeting. Move by Mr. McManus. Second by Mr. Short. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept change order number three for the Franklin Park pool improvements in the amount of $895.24. All right. Motion made and second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept application for payment number 11 for the Franklin Park pool improvements in the amount of $109,443.80. Moved by Mr. Carol. Second by Mr. Mizell. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
And in talking about the pool, for any of you that haven't had the opportunity to go down and actually go through, go down the risk show in is it is it's very nice and it's just much better than what we had before and I think they've had a full house just every day, so that's a good thing. Please be getting our money now. Next item, motion to accept request for the annual coroners homicide investigation conference in the amount of $2,170 for two detectives to attend in August. Moved by Mr. Hall, I mean Mr. Short.
And Mr. McManus.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept request for two detectives to attend an additional homicide training conference in the amount of $1,402 in October. Motion by Mr. Short. Second by Mr. McGuire. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Next item, motion to accept load bid from American Roofing and Construction in the amount of $6,462 for repairs to City Hall due to a ceiling collapse on the east side of the building. That is for the ones that did, it's the canopy section out in front of the fire escape area, the, I guess there had been a leak up there for several years or she didn't, doesn't come in the building, so we didn't know about it. It had the old fashioned concrete screen wire and it just finally got so heavy it just fell in, so, and that is an insurance item, so of course we have a $5,000 deductible, but we will be paid 1,400 and some odd dollars. We do have, we need a motion to that.
I like that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, letter. I don't have it right here, but I'll print it off on the computer. I'll just move over to the next one. We're going to drop down to the next one while Mr. Abel is printing that. We did get a letter of resignation from Deana Hopkins from the Metropolis Public Library Board. I think in the, I copied you the letter in your packets. Deana just felt like she had more commitments through the church and things like that of items that she was taking care of, that she didn't feel like she could put the amount of time in the library board that was, she felt like was necessary. Deana has done a fine job at the library and a fine young lady. We don't have to have a motion to accept that, that's just an update, but following that, I actually got a letter from Mr. Bridges on a recommendation to accept appointment of Joe Hobbs to the Metropolis Public Library. Moved by Mr. McManus. And second by Mr. McGuire. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Next item, motion to accept request from the First Missionary Baptist Church for road closure on 9th Street between 7th and 8th on August the 29th, 2015, for the purpose of community health care between the hours of 10:00 and 4:00. We actually, I don't remember what day it was, last week we actually got an email from the housing folks that actually bought the central school property, the old central school property. Asking for a letter of, is that, a letter of support for that project. They have passed approval for the first stage of their project. It comes a time now that they do need a letter of support from the city of Metropolis for that project, and that is what you are voting on there. Go backwards, we have a motion by Mr. McManus. And a second by Mr. McGuire. Any discussion?
I might add, the hospital's already approved the letter. They'll prove, all of us will have to come back and approve a resolution to the county to, if they get the project and it's going to go for the tax of basement ultimately, but what we're saying, we would do up to something like this, this will help get the support they need from Illinois Housing Development Authority for the loan that they want to get and the financing they want to run. So, the hospital did it, I think the mayor's going to carry one down to the school district and over to the county and get them to sign off too, kind of like we did on the land there basically.
Yeah, well, and if, for the ones that have been here longer, we actually had two projects with the same purpose, same process was Don Yost, which is a local hometown guy that actually built the Haven House and the affordable housing.
Parkview Apartments.
Parkview Apartments on 8th Street, same type of letter of support and things like that, so we do have a motion, we do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Sure, all of you's got the emails and things like that that Neil sent out that on J.K. Thomas. J.K.'s father was buried today. J.K.'s mother is doing better. She was actually able to get out of the hospital long enough today to attend the funeral, so be with J.K.'s family. I think Will and Lindsay came back to work today, so make sure you keep Wilbur in mind. I think David Bowman is doing a little better, chief?
Oh, yeah. He's got things going on. David Bowman's doing a lot better. If everything goes right, he'll be moved out of intensive care tonight and moved on to the floor, I believe it's the fourth floor. If everything goes right, Thursday they're going to start introducing him to more solid food and then he'll be in some kind of rehab or physical therapy, which they think will be at least a month. So, he's got a long road ahead, but it looks like he's going to make it, so.
Good. We need to move back just a little bit on, we handed out the motion on the hall and that was the missionary Baptist thing. We need to call the roll on that. We do have a motion, we do have a second.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And Short.
I think that's all of my report, corporate council report.
Thanks, Mayor. First off, folks, happy to be here today. We went out for bids on this piece of vacant property we had. I think the clerk has one, did you get one bid?
No, we have one.
Okay. If we want to, let's see. The bid is from Wayne and Betty Fong for purchase for the sum of $500. So, if we want to accept that, we have the ordinance in your packets tonight. Fill in the blanks. I'm not sure what the ordinance number is.
Ten.
This is a property we've tried a couple times to get rid of.
Honestly, you do it up and you don't, we don't have.
That's one that's we got to move.
You have a motion by Mr. McManus and a second by Mr. McGuire. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Just a couple other things, some of you probably, I know you eventually get sick of me doing this, but I try to keep you updated on what's going on in the electric world, and you've probably got one of these statements. I take, the interesting thing about this, a few years ago, people were complaining that our rates were too high and we needed to jump out. This is when gas prices hit an all time low, natural gas prices, and the spot market for energy was really low. Everybody thought, well, we ought to be able to jump out just by one of these alternate energy suppliers to supply our electric. Well, all the, the chickens are coming home to roost. Power cost is going back down, natural gas is getting back closer to where it used to be. It's not there yet, but it's getting there, and these alternate energy companies now can't honor a lot of the agreements they want. People are jumping out of that business. What's happening also that's kind of interesting is, as this article points out, the consumers that got into that didn't read the fine print and there are exit fees if you want to exit now. And so some of these folks are getting billed $500, $600, $800 to get out of their contracts, and that's never going to happen here, whether the way we operate, but it's, it's just further, I guess I call it affirmation or another reason for you to have confidence in the way that you operate your electric system, okay? You know, we preach that probably never going to be the cheapest, won't be the highest. We're going to be somewhere behind, in between, and we won't fluctuate a great deal. We'll, we'll be kind of, we may go up, but we'll be good, it'll be a steady pace and it'll be a slow pace, and that's kind of what we wanted to get across. The other thing I want to give you, because there's some interesting stuff in here too, this is called the mutiny line. Take one, please. And I know they look kind of, and there's some interesting, you don't have to read everything here. Couple things I thought I wanted to point out to you, some interesting points in here. One was, take, if you will take a minute when you get home and read that first article about speculating on the market, because there's been a lot of talk about what happened in the capacity markets down here in Southern Illinois, when capacity prices, the auction jumped from 51 cents to $4.56 per kilowatt month, okay? That's not going to affect our consumers, okay? Very, very minimal, let's put it, effect on any of our consumers, okay? Because we own our capacity as a part of the IMEAC. We own these power plants, okay? But, we do buy some on the market, but for the most part, what we buy on the market's up in PJM. We're not, we don't buy much in the market, in MISO. MISO's the market where it jumped up, all sudden the capacity jumped up. Capacity, and I think Mr. Gaden explains it well, capacity is the charge for having that facility there ready so you can call on it at any time. It's kind of like renting a car. You pay that rental fee, even if it sits in your driveway all week and you don't drive it, okay? The energy charge is what you pay for actually driving it, like the mileage that you pay for it. But the capacity, well, who will be affected by capacity? Mostly Ameren's customers, okay? And the cus, and possibly some of the customers of the co-ops, but your customers will not be affected by that. But there's a real good explanation of what that means and why it probably went up and why it should go up, because you can't afford to put a power plant in place for 51 cents a kilowatt month anymore. In fact, I'm not even sure $4.56 would do it, but, but it's going to, the markets are going to be higher going forward if we can, if we continue to operate in unregulated or deregulated environment where competition is going to drive things. The, the next thing I want to point out is, you'll notice throughout this publication, there's a number of safety awards that were made to a number of communities. Well, I'm proud to say that our guys are working hard to get into that program and get our hours measured against these same standards. I know Stony's been working on that, and hopefully within a year or so, you'll see Stony's smiling face sitting right next to them receiving an award for, because we've had a whole lot of man hours without a single lost time accident in our, in our electric department, and that's in large part due to the, yeah, I know, not going with you.
I did.
That's in large part due to the training that's going on. And an example of that training is actually in the back of this, and we've got a couple guys from Metropolis featured in it, Joe Ezel and Nathan Lott, who completed their forklift certification. That's a first for us, we haven't had that done, but that's an OSHA requirement, and we're starting to step up our training across the board in our public works departments to make sure we're meeting OSHA. We've done the 10-hour course, now we've done the forklift course, and there's going to be some additional class work and on hand, onsite training that we can do. By the way, that training was conducted here onsite, so we didn't have to send guys anywhere. IMEAC came down and a real reason was because they got two new trainers that we could access that had the certifications to train our guys. And once our guys get trained, then they train other guys, and so just wanted to, this comes out about twice a year, and so I'm, you won't have to worry about getting one of these every month to read or anything like that, but there's, there's typically some pretty interesting stuff in here. And like I say, I want to recognize the fact that we did have two of our own featured in here for completing that forklift training, and that was really good. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor, speaking of Ameren, I'm getting sometimes one at least and sometimes two calls from Ameren about the person that's taking care of the high electric bills in our area.
Chances are that's not Ameren, that's a scam.
I agree, I agree, and something, same telephone number or something, the same city.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty confident that's, that's a scam. One thing, Ameren, Ameren knows where they can and can't operate. Now, we ran into this a little bit with the alternate suppliers who just go off of zip codes, okay? And the only way to get around that is to use what they call the enhanced zip code system, which just has city boundary zip codes in it, but, but then you got to work with the alternate suppliers and let them see your list and give them that, it's, it's a pain, but, but that one there, that is a scam. Ameren is not actually.
They like old people.
Well, they got, they, they scanned some folks up in the Metro East area that way, and it's just moving around, it's our turn, I guess, so if you're, if you get one or if your friends and neighbors get one. I got one too, I just.
Did you?
Yeah, I did too, I, I got one. I guess I'm an old personnel.
Hey, you're fine.
But, yeah, so you can assure people that that is a scam.
All right, moving on. Next committee report. Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, Mayor, this is from the Warlight Street Committee meeting of last week. I will make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending and extending the residential solid waste collection and disposal collectors contract between the city of Metropolis, Illinois and Building Systems Incorporated. I believe that's going to be 2015-11.
It is, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. Canada. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I think it's the last meeting. We learned a little something that some of us may not have known. Mr. Hanson, I believe it is, he stated that if people had paint to take the lid off and let it dry, and they will pick it up. That's right.
If it's, if it's not a free flowing.
I think that's a good thing to say.
If it's not a free flowing liquid, we can take it. It can be mixed with kitty litter, or it can be dried out, and then we can take it.
All right. And Mizell.
I've got concerns, as I addressed last time in a, in a committee meeting, in the last council meeting. We can do better, and my concern is, they come with a 12-year contract at 3% a year return that day, come back with a five-year at $13.50. And it's disappointing to me that we don't give the city, the people of Metropolis, an opportunity to send this thing out for bid, to give them at least and possibly $2 a month cheaper through the bidding system. And I cannot support this motion to accept this contract. That's my opinion.
I abstained last time voting, I wanted legal opinion on no bid contracts, and Rick gave me something that I searched and I found that you can't have no bid contract, you know, but what I found was, it has to be approved by two thirds of the electric official or the alderman at that time, you know, so I, if we can save money and save a job or something, I, I, you know, I got no problem. I got nothing against bull.
I don't either.
I like bull, I mean, I like the guys to pick up for that, but I'm not, I'm not here for me and them being buddies, I'm here for the people of the town, you know, so that's my two cents. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
No.
McManus.
No.
Mizell.
No.
Short.
Yes.
They're votes.
Yes.
It's corporate authorities.
No, I don't vote on this, you know, what I've, what I've already done.
Well.
It's just aldermen and trustees. That's what I've, I mean, we do, you know, you can give me legal, legal proof on that, I don't, you know, you're legal.
Okay, I think the statute says that the corporate authorities, okay? Anytime the word corporate authorities is used, the mayor votes, okay? So that's, I believe, I mean, I know that's how it was done, and I took this from the last one, so I'm, I'm surmising that I had it that way because it says the corporate authorities, and I'm pretty sure that's the case because I just went through that in Brookport too, and I'm pretty confident that's how I had it there too, I researched it at the time.
Well, yeah, whatever I had said, alderman or trustees.
What section, David?
Five slash eight dash nine dash one. I mean, I'm not arguing the point, I just want to make sure we're right.
I can, I mean, I can look. Can I borrow back what I handed you?
I don't know.
I don't think I. Can I borrow it? Can I borrow, I'll give it back to you. I have no reason.
It's gone, it's gone.
I don't think, I don't think I.
Well, there's so many things in here that you can, you know.
I know.
I should organize about this segment, we ought to. This might be one of those, it might still tomorrow, find out the basis.
Yeah, it may have to, but I don't know, I can answer you real fast.
I thought that's what you told me.
I did last time we were here, I took you, you had to vote, and I'm trying to remember why, but I'm sure.
I think it was. I already got one section that said. The mayor or chief or whoever didn't vote, let's see.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, okay, there's a, no, there's, I know there's a rule that anytime the statute calls for a vote of corporate authorities, the mayor's supposed to vote, because, and that's where it's in like, he's supposed, he's supposed to vote like when we sell property or something like that.
Well, I understand, I understand that, so any contract, you vote on any contract?
Well, only if the, it's kind of weird, if the, if the statute says corporate authorities, now if it doesn't, if it's silent, then it's just strictly the alderman, okay? And he would vote in case of a tie, but if it's, but if he uses the term, some of them say a majority of the council, some say a majority of the aldermen, some say, some even call a two-thirds majority of the aldermen, okay?
Well, I'm saying three quarters.
Well, yeah, that's on this, that's on the sale of property or, sale of property. And you have to see if it says alderman or it says corporate authorities. I'm looking here, it says corporate authorities may, now this is about the taxes, annual appropriation, corporate authorities shall complete annual appropriation of appropriate sum of money specified amounts which, by the terms of the contracts, become due and payable. The terms of the contract's the contract for picking up the garbage, okay? So, the one down here says the corporate authorities may, the additional levy, finance establishment maintenance or. Well, yeah, that's on the, that's on the sale of property, or, sale of property. And you have to see if it says alderman or it says corporate authorities. I'm looking here, it says corporate authorities may, now this is about the taxes, annual appropriation. Corporate authorities shall include annual appropriation of appropriate sum of money sufficient payment amounts, which by the terms of the contracts, we're kind of doing payable. The terms of the contract is the contract for picking up the garbage, okay? So... The one down here says the corporate authorities may, the additional levy, finance, establish, or maintenance of systems or plans by contract or direct provision for the collection and disposal. So, again, it's the corporate authorities. So, service charges we establish or establish, we expect to give original access to the contract obligations, which is what we do, we pass it on within charging extra. So, it's talking about the corporate authorities establishing the service charges and assembling the, the contracts. So, I mean, that's why, it's my opinion, it is the corporate authorities-
You don't understand the rules.
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty confident with that, guys. I know he hasn't, and sometimes he doesn't vote even when it is, it's, I've got his name on here sometimes, but he hasn't voted. But if it's, if it's the corporate authorities, then six out of nine would be two-thirds and that would pass, okay?
Then how far he carried it out? You go ten places you wouldn't.
Well, okay.
Three places you might.
If you just do fractions, it would, it's okay. The, but it'd be my opinion it's the corporate authorities, I mean, that's just, that's-
Your vote is?
Yes, I can move it.
Motion carried.
Moving right on along, live on. Next committee report. Mr. Carroll, please, and Farm, sir.
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the advertising for the position of dispatcher for the Metropolis Police Department.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Short. Discussion? Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under Police Department?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to suspend the rules complacent ordinance authorizing the sale or other disposition of personal property of the City of Metropolis upon its passage.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. McManus. Chief Massey.
If there's any questions about the items that are going to be sold, it's approximately a hundred bicycles, some miscellaneous tools, some exercise equipment, some lawn equipment tools. There's some gaming machines that have been confiscated and the cases are now over with. Let's see, some children's toys, a lot of copper, wiring and tubing, some entertainment equipment, some tires, a police shield, which was the barrier for the old Crown Dicks that we don't use anymore. Some home furnishing, kitchen tables, and stuff like that. A Yamaha dirt bike, some audio speakers, a collection of Star Trek memorabilia, two thousand five Chrysler three hundred, which was a confiscation.
Did that cop-
Can I, can I type your list and attach it here? Yes, okay, all right.
Did that cop a coof from?
Then there's two Army surplus trailers. Army surplus tower lights, some Army stoves, and a Army surplus cargo truck. So, there's some Lussel equipment that's being sold that we've had over the required time that isn't de-milled, or no, that is de-milled.
You, you didn't hear what I said, did you?
No, sir.
Did that cop a coof from? Old lady, though?
We don't know where the copper came from. Most of the, all the copper was from investigations where we could never locate the rightful owner, and nobody came to claim it, so it's just unclaimed property. There's, there's, there's probably good sixty pounds of copper, you know? A lot of it's still insulated, it had been burned off, but, excuse me.
Is that Ricky's old car, the one that-
The yellow one, yeah. It was confiscated originally, but-
It's an online house, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're interested in seeing those items, plus whatever else this agency has, it's www.govdeals.com. And then stuff is broke down by category, you click on it, and it shows all the active auction sites. And then what happens is, is once the auction's over, the winning bid cuts a check to GovDeals with a twelve-and-a-half percent surcharge, which covers their fee, and then an administrative fee for us for, for the money. But that comes from the seller, it doesn't cost us anything. So, all this found property, the bicycles, the old evidence that's been disposed to be destroyed will go back into general revenue. The car, because that was a drug seizure, will go into the drug fund, and then the Lussel stuff will put into a Lussel fund that will be used for, for future equipment and acquisitions, so it can start paying for itself.
With, with the council's permission, what I'd like to do is, is this exhibit that I put on there, this is the best we could come up with on last Friday, Short noticed. Harry's got a better list.
Yeah, I got over the weekend.
If we, if we can substitute his list for the one that you all have, the one he ran through just now.
I'll be happy for everybody.
That'd be, that'd be, yeah, here, I'll take it, dude. But if you don't mind.
He's got a full page out there.
What about some of the other departments that we get them to go ahead and?
Do I?
Some of the other departments that's got some junk. Can we get them to put that on there, too?
Like, what kind of junk you talking about?
What I was-
I'm sure all departments have stuff.
We have, yeah, we have to go through that same process, it has to be bid. Right now, we don't have anything that we're not using on. We try in the street department to scrap that stuff as soon as we, and we can't scrap it. We've got a lot of old cars, we take parts out of trucks.
This is the first time we're using this site to try this out, instead of me trying to play auctioneer and getting pennies on the dollar. So, we'll, we'll have a couple squad cars that we'll be putting on next that will go back into general revenue, the Crown Dick and the, not the Crown Dick, Dodge Charger. And then, yeah, the Crown Dick, we purchase for the next budget replacement, and then-
This right here, you'll have a bigger market area.
Sure you will.
Yeah, this, this company, GovDeals, is actually international. A lot of the bicycles get picked up by, by European marketers because obviously their transportation system's a little bit different than ours. There's a big demand for American bicycles, so they, they buy a lot of them and we store them and sell them over there for-
Should add this on the motion, ask for this, to Chief Massey.
Yes, sir, yes.
But it sounds like a pretty good deal, because they do all the work and they, and the, the charges go on to the buyer, so we don't lose anything like that, so.
To add to your, I guess, Mr. Bar- Each item we sell, we have to sell in this process.
I ask the clerk to add that, and you're just, clerk, the list by Chief Massey.
That motion made by Mr. Carroll and the second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
And the mayor.
And the mayor.
I get to vote, too. Don't drop, yes.
That's two.
clerk, what, what ordinance will this be?
It's going to be twelve.
I make the motion, we all adopt ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve, authorizing sale or other disposition of personal property of the City of Metropolis.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Oh, I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Department heads. Harry?
That's it.
Mason?
Nothing to follow up with that.
Stony?
Yeah, I'm good.
Gray?
I think we're telling it this time.
All right. Old business. New business.
I have one added, Mayor. The Metropolis area chair's commission will be here tomorrow at eleven o'clock at East Chambers.
Eleven o'clock here?
Yes, sir.
We do have a bid opening also tomorrow under new business for the FEMA houses at one o'clock? One o'clock?
We had, uh-
Sixteen?
Uh, where do we have it?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
And I don't know how many will wind up submitting, I don't know how many have submitted at this point. There was, there were people calling with questions today, and they actually picked stuff up two weeks ago, and they were finally waiting till today, and then some of them had not talked to their bonding company yet, and, uh, we'll see.
Is it all straightened out with asbestos?
Yeah, 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 we got the, we got the reports to them, and they know what they got to do. In fact, one of them called today, wanted to know if, if anybody that has that asbestos abatement license had actually picked up specs. As far as I know, there's at least one that did, that actually already has the abatement license. And I put, I gave them the name for that one, because I think they were looking to see who I had a subcontract with. A couple of them, when they did call earlier, said that they had done this before, and they had an abatement contractor that they worked with, so I assume they will have difficulty getting some in. Just, I think some of them waited till the last minute to, it looks like, to look over. The questions they were asking today, a lot of them were just right there in front of them, it was fast.
They had news reading.
And plus, it said, they kept calling Jan's office, trying to get the girls to answer questions, they've done that for a week. And the instructions clearly say to put your questions in writing and send them either to me or the mayor. And that gives us a chance to talk to the engineers if we need to. Nobody's done that yet, so.
That better be done here tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll do it right in here, yeah. And Jan will bring them up, we'll sit here and, and then we'll, that'll give us until the twenty-seventh to really evaluate and make sure everybody got their stuff in that they were supposed to have in, their bid bonds and their abatement license. And I can read their bids, I'll have to look and see what else is required in the bid space.
Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. Second, Mayor. Second by Mr. Mizell. Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Short? Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills. Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have a need for an executive, elective bargaining, sale, lease, or exchange of real property, or is it?
Yeah, well, actually, it's more like acquisition of real estate or threat litigation. And the basis for the threat litigation would be the potential after-bought collection dates.
I'll make that motion to go in second session.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.